Father, we're thankful for this day. Father, we're thankful for all the many blessings you bestowed upon each and every one of us, both materially and spiritually. Father, we're thankful, Father, for the opportunity you've given us to come out tonight to do the city's business. Father, we pray that the decisions that we make here tonight will be in accordance with our will, Father, when moving you in the direction that you have us go. Father, we are thankful. We see the police presence here tonight. We're thankful for our first responders, for our firemen, for our police officers. Thankful for all that they do for us to keep us safe each and every day, Father. Father, we also remember the men and women, Father, in favor of your freedoms allows to be here this evening. Pray, Father, that if it be thy will, to bring them home to their families at their least possible time and without harm. And, Father, we ask you to go with us through this meeting, Father, for the rest of our lives that we not have here on earth, Father. Forgive us when we fail thee, for us in Christ's name. Amen.
I hear multiple of self minutes for my screen. Come on, look at us. Second on. Doug? You wanna come up? Or all of you can, if you want to. Come on. Okay, life's late, mate. We, uh, certain friends Doug, you all has some questions, boy. I hear ya.
I saw it all. Yes, sir. That's a question. I got a question. Why, why did, uh, why we can't kick two cops on at night?
We're working on that. We've been working on it for a while.
And, um...
Y'all got positions, okay, we just haven't got to deal with it. It's not, not an easy process.
And, uh, I got another question since, uh, people com- complaining about when they call on the top of the U., you won't return their calls. I guess, so, even I called you and I, uh, you won't return my calls. Did I, did I have you tell Doug call me the other day?
Yeah, I'm out for this a little bit. Me and Lori, we answer the phones for them fifteen times a day. We take notes.
I'm not, I'm not...
But, but, this is what I'm telling you.
I'm not answering yes or no answer.
Yes, but we take notes for them, and when Doug comes in, I hand him a stack full of messages.
I don't have, I don't have a problem with that. I'll just say, uh, yes or no answer. Did I call them the other day? Did you tell me you had them to call?
Yes, I did.
No, that, got another problem.
He tried to, he tried to answer your question wrong.
Well, I understand that. I, I could, I understand that. The shelf station. And we not have nobody up there in the mornings to have them open up at four o'clock?
Are they there every morning at four o'clock?
When they open up, she'd go in at four and, uh, the, uh, don't nobody be up at twelve, thirty at night?
First time anybody said anything to me about, oh, he had to use them back to the office back here in Austin about, he had to bring it up and leave, but that's fine too.
Do we, uh, still did what we used to do four years ago? I know there used to be someone at the Pigley Wiggly when they closed. There was somebody out there at the shelf when they closed. Are we still doing that? At closing time for their protection?
They supposed to, somebody in there.
So, you may are doing that? I'm assuming...
I'm assuming they are. So, there's nobody complaining. If you're complaining about your first complaint about...
No, I'm only asking a question. It's not the point.
Well, they complaining mainly that's when I asked the question. You know, like, I say this morning at four o'clock, the lady went in up there. There wasn't no police up at four.
They're sitting right back there, so they heard it and they know it.
Oh, I know where it was at. I talked to them. And they were by itself last night.
Yeah, they'll be by themselves.
And they had no help. I think the county had it happen last night.
They call, they come help from all agencies.
Yeah, but we want...
All the time.
We have people too, though.
Yeah, but we want to be, I, I'm the one, I want to be more, we got enough for help. What if they don't come and one of these guys get them tied? Soon or later, it's gonna happen. You know, we need two positions on at night.
That's on me, that's on y'all. Y'all want to pay for the positions, we'll fill them.
Well, we gonna pay for a position. We need, you know, one, just happened the other night. He, a guy had, uh, up, would have him up to the, uh, Poitiers. He had some help for, or he gets one or whatever. We, we got to have two positions on at night. You know, we got more, uh, low-income houses probably than anybody in the county or state, and we're not just cut, I'm not cutting them people. You know, you hear us, we're just, it's two things out there for one man. I see like the other day...
Twenty years, twenty years, I'm sure.
I know, that was twenty years ago.
That ain't been twenty years ago.
Fifteen years ago.
Five years ago, I still working on it.
But you know Jimmy Black won't do that, you know. You know, this other guy, this time changed. They thought it's, we got too much dope activity going around here.
I'm working away that way. I've hired two more people since I took over as chief, so, I said, it's up to y'all to create positions. Y'all create positions, we'll do what we can to get them filled. And then, like I said, it's not easy to fill a position.
We should, we should get out of one field.
Cause those criteria that they had to pass to get in the position, once you pass all our background checks and all that, then you gotta go through APOS. And that's what happened. That's what happened, has happened in the past, something that APOS keep.
Cause some are gonna be here another couple of months and, uh, they gonna get these in-contact checks, and it's gonna be, there's too much handling around here. And one man ain't got a chance, but I said, I don't think one man can do without some calls. He ain't gonna stop no calls at one o'clock in the morning by himself coming out that project. I mean, come on, let's come and see. Would you, by his side? Four, five in the car, come on, I'll be out there every night, just about. I was out here last night at two o'clock, three o'clock. Relax that man right there. With Winfield.
The open position, do we have any prospects right now?
No. We're still having to wait on some final things, uh, to go through. Process finished, or we can restart the process again.
So, if, if, if and when we fill that spot, is that gonna allow us to have, we're gonna need more?
That's, it'll be about two hours early in the morning if there won't be but one of.
For some reason, I'm thinking that we have, as a council, have voted and there's two vacant positions. For some reason, I am thinking...
One of them was being...
No, I'm still thinking we had two. I'll have to go back.
I think we talked about filling some overtime, whether it's part-timers.
We got to fill the lean.
And there's, there's not many part-time people out there that is there filling spots.
One or two working on it?
Do what?
One or two part-timers working every once in a while, huh?
I got one regular right now. And the rest of them, not...
Kidding me?
Yeah. And I told him, I said, "Shields are open, you come, you call me, let me know if you wanna come work, and we'll work." And I don't have but one that's doing it.
He can't work much, I don't think, can he? The one, the one was happy.
Nah, he's probably going to, be going overseas in the military in June or July.
He worked for the mall counter, I'm not saying that in the mall counter.
Yeah, that's, that's a part-time employee.
I just wanna go out on the council, but I, my, my preference is let's get the spot filled quick, as quickly as you can. I know that there's restrictions, but then maybe let's talk about maybe another spot. I mean, after that, to, to ensure that we have two people around the block. I do agree, and I think y'all agree, that y'all rather have two people around the block, right? And I think we all agree that we'd rather have two people around the block. So, I, I'd say, once you get that spot filled, let's, let's talk about maybe doing another one and seeing what we can do to do that. This is, is my opinion.
Uh, two weeks ago, three weeks ago, about three in the morning, two thirty, I stopped up at motel. And, uh, it was cops up there, one of the cops up there. Now, one man can't handle that up there and try to work time too. It's impossible. If he run up there, check motel out or whatever, what's going on in town, he leave, he leave here, nothing, nobody here.
I agree. I think we need to fill up that one, and I think we do need to look at adding at least one more, you know? Because, I mean, you still gonna have overtime filling with, even if you hire one more besides that one, spending vacation days and absent days and all that other stuff.
I think one or two Doug has told you that we have a hard about three, and that doesn't work out.
I know. I, I understand that. I understand. I'm saying, once we get this one filled, us as a council, we need to look at adding at least one more, if not two, because you're still gonna have vacancies there when people take vacation days, or they're all sick, or something happens. You're still gonna have gaps there, because one or two ain't gonna fill those gaps if somebody's off.
If you're top one, they don't have, for them, have somebody on twenty-four seven, and at night, at times, they got three on, but it takes thirteen people to do it.
They have three on every night, I don't know, on weekend, they might have more sometime. The chief might ride out. Last night, I went over two, three o'clock, had three on.
How many?
One stack.
But they got thirteen people to do it. That one's, that one's...
How many towns outside has more police than we do?
How many towns outside got a four...
I'm asking Wes, where do you get this way tonight?
Uh, I don't know, not me, I don't, I wouldn't do...
How many southern's got it?
I don't know.
I think, how many Winfield's got it? Y'all know?
Thirteen. Twelve, they, they, they got thirteen, and half of them got fourteen.
Winfield's over twice bigger than we are, and we gotta hide them in there. But, well, I'm like y'all, I probably agree with you, we need to. I guess y'all agree with that, though. Apparently, y'all agree with that, and I think...
We agree with it, but since I've been here, y'all know, two years, by myself at night, and he has gone out of his way to give us some help at night. I mean, by putting Vinnie on an eight-hour shift just to help out the night shift guys, he's, he's doing what he can with what he's got right now. It's just...
That's what I'm saying, but, I mean, if we had two of them besides what we got here, it would have everybody...
Yeah, if we had more, I mean, I could tell you how much, production, these guys too, we made probably plenty more cases having two on at night than what we had before, you know, as simple as, there's, there's times that other cities have to come help us, cause we're backed up on calls. Um, but...
Well, let's see if we get them more than we will.
Right.
We gotta harden up if y'all want to.
We, we can't hardly get, you know, just controlling the areas, and, and control, cause they don't have no...
When y'all did the PT test out here, when y'all did the PT test out here, did another one scored well higher, much higher than anybody else? Did you have another one or two prospects on that list that you thought might...
That was basically a pass fail test. And then we took the ones out of here and kind of do some background checks on and stuff, and, uh, that was...
How many? Four?
How many, how many of them passed the test?
Four.
Four. And actually done some more checking on the four that passed the test. They, we narrowed it down to two, one backed out, so it left us with one. So, that's where our choice... And I said, that was out of like seventeen applications, so, and that many, that was all that showed up to do the PT. Given it was a pretty, pretty large time gap that we were doing some back, trying to do some background checks, during that time, there were some other things going on.
While you're tying up the rest of this stuff to, to get started again, should we go ahead and get another posting together and maybe advertise again?
Once we, once we get past this procedure with this other, you know, it's going with the sure, we can...
It's just like, uh, a girl here fill a grandmother's house, like the pole law, going to fill it, and she said she go, go around that way, keep them going through Winfield. She didn't have no license, no insurance. She could get by here and give them, but she wasn't gonna go through Winfield. It took city council, and she, she's gotta tell us that. It's an ain't true, but, but, you know, I, you know, I don't know, they say we weak and we ain't got enough help, but what? We, we're gonna get y'all some help. Y'all need some help.
Is there anything you may tell us? I mean, you know, we, we kind of been into talking, what about you guys? What can we do if you, more than just giving some help? I know you've got a couple of trouble spots in that, in town, every town does, and, uh, can't cover it every hour on hour. Are we getting that, those trouble spots, are we getting them covered regularly? You know, I guess...
I can kind of partially answer. Whenever somebody calls us and says, you know, "Hey, that thing speeding up our road, running stop sign," or somebody's doing this, we'll write it. I'm not gonna go there, I'm just saying, I don't need, but, uh, I'll write it on the board. If one, somebody goes to one of them and complains about a certain area, that way everybody comes in, cause everybody always ain't on, cause you got two guys on two days while the other two's off, and then they don't never, always see, so, so we write it on the, it's a drive board, drive race board, we write it on our control, where people's requesting controls. It used to be you go from the top to the bottom, but I hadn't had any complaints here. Got a lot of certain areas, uh, actually, my dad called yesterday, somebody broke into this little, little church house down below his house. But that's, that's the only person I've had call and complain about a specific area. You know, people call and, you know, "Hey, I'm gonna be out of town," we write it on the board, you know? That way they know the old control area. We try not to leak, we try not to put that up, I can see that too.
Well, I appreciate what you're saying, Doug, because as a council, we're sort of blind to what goes on, what you guys do. I mean, we don't know anything, sort of, everybody likes to hush-hush, maybe. We don't have anything against the enemy. As we run into these citizens around town, and you run into them, just like we do, they got questions, you know, and it's, it's hard to answer those questions, you know? And we don't know anything about it, and, of course, we don't get to talk to you much anyway, cause you're busy, but I appreciate you elaborating on, on kind of, some of the procedures that y'all are doing, so that we can, well, it's okay, that, yeah, I'll go down there, they'll go and put it on the board or whatever, and get something done by it, cause that's my, my concern, that's why I'm sort of verbal here.
What about up to the bricks?
In these places, we're...
We using that unit, we using that unit up to the bricks, though.
That's not really helping, uh, because you can go over and set in it, but that's not gonna keep people from doing the, riding through more effective, then, then that didn't turn out, I thought, I thought, we thought it was gonna work out, but, because I wasn't gonna put no equipment in it, cause it's probably gonna get stowed. And the reason is, them apartments does not have anything between the apartments that's open or at, open on one end of the other. And, cause we've chased, and the reason I know that, cause we've been after people that's been in that one, actually, that very apartment, and we had it sealed off, and they got out, and we found out later that they crawled up through that and went over to the other, you know, all, all the way across to the office, and then, then the kitchen got it. But they did get out, and...
Doug, does the cameras still function out here on this?
No. Then we've had Price and Tracy's looked at it, and, uh, he's had some issues come up, and been out of, out of, uh, away from his business for a while, so, just now getting started back.
Seems like we have a hard time keeping it working up.
You're talking about the original installer? You're talking about the original installer?
Uh, that would probably help some, as far as, um, you know, we can see what's coming through the town. And about, after a while, eventually, they'll figure out we're using that camera, and that will drive it out. They'll figure it out.
They're smart, they're smart.
Well, but in some instances, it probably would still help them, but long as we can use it and kind of keep from, keep it as an investigative tool to figure out things, you know, if somebody drove through with a vehicle, with a load of stuff, so, you know, we don't let out the, we, that's how we found it, you know, for a while, that'll work for a while, but it's, long, long as we keep it quiet, that we're using that to do that, and then, cause we don't, I said, they're gonna go down the back street over here, but on the other side of the corner, or they come up the street here and go, and go dead ice and handle people.
I think the big ass, y'all as far as cameras go, is you wanna total. You know, just where y'all, if y'all need to, y'all pan up there and see what...
They, I think, they were supposed to talk about putting cameras up, I saw.
At the whole thing?
Yes.
Did they finally put some up? You know...
I don't know if they got them up yet.
I think they some up there.
But, you know what...
But one of the tanks don't work.
Right, that's what I'm saying, but, I mean, that would help y'all, if y'all were down here, where y'all can just pan up there, and you may not have to drive up there as often to check it out.
And that, that's the way they'd probably do it, where we can, you know, pull it up on a computer and all that.
That's what I'm saying. Yeah, that's what I'm saying, that would get us safe, y'all. Right, right.
All right, is, is everybody comfortable with getting this poor person hard, and then coming back and hard, and doing other, other, the...
How long you think it'll be before that process...
Keep a couple people out there for a while.
It's gonna be April for this class, this session graduates, so it'll be at least April before, and before they, or next, another class starts.
No, what you're saying is this process, before we hire anybody?
I would wait till then, cause I just don't make...
I have something online to tell the council, and Rebecca can probably vouch for this too. We work sometimes with the public, when the police bring us police reports, so somebody can stop at the counter up front, get them, and it's just easier. And we hear numerous times a week what a good job our police are doing, how professional they are, how helpful they are, and we never have people complain unless they're calling in to say, "I got a ticket for running a stop sign, or for speeding, or for something that they think they're above getting a ticket for." But we hear a lot of praises on them, and they really do a good job.
And a lot of the business owners in town will call and leave messages for us if they're gonna be working late, just like the wires will call and say, "We're gonna be working late here, and the holidays will, you make sure that a patrolman is, is there when we leave." We leave that with them every time people call. What I was saying before is people call and leave messages with us, and we, we give it to whoever's home, morning or evening, we give it to Doug, and you think he's sitting around, and he's just taking care of his boys, he, they're, I mean, we get fifty phone calls a day on stuff, some stuff that makes no sense. A lot of stuff is very helpful.
I tell you something that would help, that other agencies do have, and it would take some stuff off of them, cause they're not only answering the phone, doing the town's business, they're answering the phone for us, is, and somebody to file paperwork for us. That would free up some of my time, and plus free up them too. Be something to look at. I know a lot of the other agencies got somebody just during the daytime, but that's what they do, like, uh, Chinese, Chinese, like Lauren does it at Winfield, uh, one of the boys, we interviewed his life, that's a...
What you think? About seventy, at least seventy-five percent of the calls gonna be during the day, usually?
Well, most of them, I guess, most of them, yeah.
And they'll call us before they call nine-one-one, then?
Yeah, that's, that's the issue. People have a nine-one-one call, instead of doing that, they're gonna call the officer, they gonna call my cell phone, "Hey, I got this, this," and so I have to stop, listen to what they're telling, and then turn around and try to remember who's working, call in and say, "Hey, look, we got this going on," when they shut, call nine-one-one, start with it. And the thing about it is, when it goes through nine-one-one, the calls are for you, if anything bad happens, it protects us, it protects whoever, you know, cause it's an official call, cause it goes through nine-one-one. But people call, they'll call back, some of them call their cell phones, cause they know they're known. There's just things that we deal with.
So, this, the, the policeman that can find this paperwork, it can be...
It can be a civilian, yeah, you can have a civilian employee.
We'll say along the lines what Lori and Rebecca were saying, we had city court doctor today, and I've been doing this thirty something years, and you can tell when you got problems in the police department, you get to city court, cause you just have problems, people come in fighting, mayhem, or, you know, and then just paperwork not done, one thing and another. We don't have that right now, and have it lately. I would say that. We don't, we don't lose many cases. They might come and they hold up.
All right, anybody got an idea? When we get fortified, you know?
Three oh...
We ain't hiring you.
I might need...
Three oh two at the back door. I don't know what that is, though.
All right, new business. Roger, we got a couple things, we may rather drain the ditches in the garden, trust me.
Yeah. We got some ditches and water, uh, like, uh, the moon coming down the moon, they'll have somewhere, it is in the, uh, it is in the heat and cooling, and, and all that water coming down from under their house, and, uh, I think Jerry and the Poitiers man went over to, it flooded his NAPA out, though, sir. I don't know, they went up there.
Well, I got it, really wasn't our fault, I don't think.
It wasn't our fault. It is an issue, we've only helped with... Well, it's something that we're gonna have to look at, the, the ditch by the apartments out there that feeds behind the building there, it was totally stopped up, but the ditch is totally stopped up, and I think we probably have to go to the landowner and say, "Hey, what are you gonna do about this?" Because it was flooding, passing off hand, the part of place two. It looked like a Niagara Falls, called it, it was stopped up. I don't know how we do that.
I agree, but we have a wall running.
Well, we can't, I know, can't go on private property, it's hard.
These, the culverts that are getting stopped up, if anybody notices the culverts getting stopped up anywhere, they'll let the fire department know, we've got something to clean them out, and we can do it, we can do it on drill nights.
I guess, Randy, they, they clean them.
Right, but that's what I'm saying, if they'll just let the fire department know, we've got a, a culvert cleaner that we hook to the fire truck that'll blow those out, which'll do away with a lot of the problems that we have, but, I mean, we can't do it the day they call, we, you know, we have to clean it out, drill it out, or something.
It's pretty wet, it's a lot of, but Roger on the, behind daddy's down here, uh, me and Dale, my friend got Tom and Arthur, and they, they, uh... and Dale, my friend got Tom in, in Hutter, and they, they, uh, found the lines, in other words, you know, the gas line, water line. We, we, we are trying to work some where we can turn that water coming on the left side of the telephone building.
It's coming down the.
Work something in there where we can turn that into that, uh, fire line. If we can do that, I think that'll protect him a lot. I mean, we looked at that as business, you know?
I said, that building, I'm reading, it's, it, 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 yeah, it's, it come all the way down.
No, no, and we did go where Jerry, I reckon we did, I told him, I think we did.
They killed one over there.
And we got that side of the fork, but, I mean, that's another thing, we, we know what we'll do, you know?
We just happened to be in there when the water was coming in.
No, I guess.
What about, um, and I talked to you a little bit about this, cause I talked to me over close to Randy Silas' house over there. That street over there, where that water is bad to, and there's not, there's not a drainage ditch there, is there? Is there a way to put some kind of?
It stands in the road right there.
You're talking about?
Right there below Doopie Drive, right there.
Yeah.
You're talking about where Randy used to live or?
No, where, you know where Randy lives now?
Now.
Randy.
Sammy.
Sammy Silas.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
And when you turn on Doopie Drive?
That's the wrong one, yeah.
They say they have a lot.
Water stands in the road bank out there.
I'm not, I'm not a road construction man, but to me, that's might be built up about four inches or something. That's a big issue right there, it's full of stone, gravel and everything right now. I was out there the other day when that lane was coming down, it was like that. And it's gotta be built up and cleaned out, you know, open up a ditch.
A ditch is gonna have to be.
To fix that.
Yeah.
And it can be done, uh, a big cost.
Well, look at that, okay. We're gonna try to get that water turned somehow, Roger, I don't know how, if I don't work on the water.
That of course, what do we decide on our, on our cleaning? What, what, what we gonna do about all this stuff we're supposed to clean up? We don't, uh, send letters out, uh, uh, what, what, how we gonna do this? How we gonna get all this straightened out? My neighbor says she hasn't got a letter yet, so.
It's down to the court system. Your neighbor, you need to go turn her into the court system, and you need to let Terry do something, and the police will serve her with papers, and she doesn't get her stuff cleaned up in an amount of time, then she's taken to city court.
Why do I have to do it?
Anybody can, but it needs to be, it, it needs to be somebody that, that knows that area or the person, or knows what's going on, so you can kind of describe it and say what's going on in her yard.
You're saying they got to file a complaint?
Yes, sir.
They have to file a complaint?
Yes, sir.
Which side is this?
See, Hamilton, uh, block hours, they know you're not, they, they see it and they send a letter out. Fifteen, they give fifteen days, that's it.
And I'm not saying that we need our police officers going out looking for yards that are trashed or not noted, but, um, I thought, that was one question I asked when we put that ordinance in place, was, does a neighbor have to file a complaint, or does, can we see somebody violating law based on what we put in place and, and go ahead and send them?
Anybody can.
That's it. So that's not, I guess, so anybody, we, we can, if we choose to do so as a city, we can choose to say, if we wanna come in here as a council and we've got fifteen properties that we need to get cleaned up based on the ordinance, we can come in here and, and file those complaints, right? And same way with police officer or, you know, you as a mayor or whoever, we see those, and I think we need to start doing that, honestly. It's, you know, Doug doesn't have enough time to just drive around looking for these places to clean up. But if we've got places, let's take them to Terry and let's go ahead and file, file those complaints, cause we, that's the reason why we put it in place, right? To get them cleaned up. So if somebody's got to file a complaint, you ain't gonna file a complaint.
A lot of people don't wanna do it.
Well, I.
They'll come and talk to us, and they don't.
Well, I don't, I don't think it should be, I don't think, I don't think your neighbors should have to file a complaint. The city, if you, if, if you ride through the neighborhood and you the mayor, you say that it'd be cleaned up, why can't you tell them, uh, send a letter, get it cleaned up? That's what my neighbor gonna call.
Well, I can, but why can't y'all do it?
Well, you know, my neighbor gonna call and tell you.
If you say what it comes out.
Don't text a good y'all. I just like over the, what? Like, uh, I hate to say, Rico, but have you been over there?
Over.
Over there by Bob Burson there. Turned out, but that way over there by Danny Kellum, have you been over there?
Yeah.
Have you seen that? What we gonna have to do to clean that up?
I don't know, I told him, if he wanted to file a complaint, he could.
Well, say they'll not be left.
Well, he filed a complaint, he wanted to.
And then be cleaned up.
He filed a complaint.
So here, and, and I.
I shouldn't have to file a complaint.
Well, somebody, well, that's what we voted on.
Well, it shouldn't, it shouldn't be, no, that ain't what we voted on.
We, we, as a city, can send them a letter to clean up the property based on the ordinance.
Yeah.
We don't have to have a complaint from, that was the, what we, I asked that specific question, because pitting neighbor against neighbor, that's exactly.
But I ain't wanna.
Somebody's got an issue.
Somebody got an issue.
And you got to relate about it, you can't just say, hey, Jerry, clean up the yard.
If they're violating the prop, uh, the ordinance.
What about that guy?
Well, I know, but I mean, you, you gotta tell people specifically, if it's junk cars, and, you know, whatever, and someone's gotta do that, you know?
I think the way.
But, but, I mean, we as city officials can do that. We don't have to have a, we can go out and, and write a list of twenty properties and they clean up, and we can start that process, right? But, and what I'm saying is, you know, my, my whole point behind a, a city ordinance that, you know, we don't, I don't think we need to count on a neighbor turning in another neighbor. That's what we don't need to count on. Because it's not gonna happen. We're never gonna get the city cleaned up if we do it that way. Cause they're not gonna do it, we know it. So if our ordinance states that has to happen, then we, we got the wrong.
Or any, anybody can.
Well, maybe, maybe.
But then, I mean, you know, once again, you're talking about policemen, and that's just, you know, it's a little bit time consuming, go over there and look around. And what, what they have to do now, once we do them, Terry sends them out and they'll take a picture. And, and then we'll write the letter and be specific, you know? But, do, somebody's gotta kind of.
We got, one of our guys is, is designated to, whenever we get the complaints, he goes takes the pictures, does all the description and turns it in. We'll just wait on somebody to call, whenever we get.
Why don't we just?
And, and they can talk to me about it, I, I.
Why don't we as a group, just come in?
And then Terry, Terry and I are up to file a complaint.
If somebody comes and complains to any of us in here, we ought to be able as a council, and I understand what you're saying, say, okay, they're fi, they're, they're coming to us complaining about it, that's a complaint, and us as a council will be able to say, hey, let's initiate this ordinance and.
You could just call Terry.
That's what I'm saying.
But I have to.
Well, what, what I wanna emphasize is that you need to be specific.
Right, I understand that.
And I'm just, you know, just say, I don't like Jerry has the yard, and then make somebody come out there and have to document, tell them what, what it's bugging you about it.
I understand.
If it's bugging you.
I understand the part, cause when somebody's calling, say, if they was to call me and complain about it, I'm gonna ask them what's wrong with it.
Yeah.
And when they tell me, we can get the description of what's wrong with it, and come as a council and call Terry and say, hey, we've got a complaint over this yard, and it's this, this, this.
One other suggestion I would have would be to, kind of like we do the trash, pick up weeds and that sort of thing. It's just, you know, you know, working mad, you, 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 catching the time when you freeze somebody up, ride around, take names.
Yeah.
You know, and just make a splash of it, you know? Over a period of time, then, you know, you won't have to do it.
Right.
Well, I mean, that's my suggestion, let's, as a group, let's just get together, let's figure out which properties we want to clean up, and let's, let's bring that to, I, I don't want to, I don't want it to be a, something, such a thing where, if I'm complaining about my neighbor's yard, cause, I mean, I'll do it, but some won't, but they may, if I'm having to be the complainant in the court, I'm having to go to court, we are the city prosecuting them for violating the ordinance. The city should be the, the prosecuting client, I mean, we're.
And this is fine that way.
That's, that's what I want it, I mean, that's, I mean, that's, I think, the way it should be, and it will.
If it bothers you enough, though, y'all can complain to them. We get the same thing, dollars, you know, we complain to Doug or somebody about the dollar, they'll sign a piece of paper, and that's more for the city. They, they gotta know something, you know, and you, you ride by.
Let's go back a few years. Uh, I think this park was done, it was supposed to be torn down, and nobody done anything.
That's right.
Hey, there, there's a.
I mean, why was that not followed through with?
Well, it's Supreme Court judgment against the guy.
I know, why, why, how come that wasn't followed through?
Supreme Court, I mean, we, we, we have done everything, we've done everything that we could possibly do, and all the way to the Supreme Court, there is no other jurisdiction to go to.
Well, somebody, somebody's got to do it.
So you say I can buy it tomorrow?
No, I'm not saying that.
I said I need to file a writ of execution.
Well, I don't know, I just wondered why it wasn't followed through.
We, we can't have a city.
You gotta follow through with it.
Well, we have followed through, but the thing is, we can't go down there and tear it down in the city. We don't have.
Who's supposed to?
He's supposed to.
He is.
You're supposed to tear it down.
The guy that goes to court.
The owner.
He ain't gonna tear it, wait until Roger. But listen.
I'll follow up on that.
I just like.
I agree with you about it, y'all owe you a hundred percent, but these letters has got a few people claiming the place there.
That's fine.
But now they really have.
But here's, but here's my thing, look, we, we've gotta have, quit having a short, you know, we, we, we don't need to have a short view of things, okay? Yeah, we can make people mad by going and telling them to clean up the yard, but if we want you to be around twenty years from now, we gotta stop some of this crap. We gotta, we gotta have cleaned up yard, and we got, we can't be placing just, you know, anything on property. We've gotta have a better way to structure, uh, you know, and if that requires owning, that's something that maybe we wanna talk about the next, next council meeting, we already talked about some housing issues. Housing and people keep, people keeping their property clean, if we want you in the grow, we gotta, we gotta do those things, and that's on us to do. It's not on the neighbor down there to, to make it happen. They can complain about it, but we've gotta make it happen. If we don't make it happen, you ain't gonna go away, and nobody's gonna wanna come and live here.
Uh, let me clarify one other thing too. If you complain about your neighbor, uh, you don't have to be the witness.
And that, that, that's.
And, and there, you know, there's a statement like on the dog ordinance, only you know that it chased your, dipped at your, whatever. Uh, once you make it, uh, you know, you make the complaint, then anybody, right, I see what the deal is, but, uh, it's just, you know, freeing up somebody to get by there and do that, you know?
We just gotta have long-term view, but, uh, that's just what, what, what we're gonna see in you, because i- if we allow just everybody to go willy-nilly and do whatever they want to around here and, and trash the city, we're, we're not gonna, we're not gonna have a city to go to.
I said, like your neighbor, Jerry, have you filed a complaint on him? All that junk, and there's y'all.
Half the town complains about it.
Huh?
I said, everybody now complains about it, about it.
I mean, you satisfied with it?
No, I'm not satisfied with it.
Have you signed a complaint?
No.
Well, that's what man Bobby just talked about.
Why don't y'all sign one then?
I will.
I'll get you a list.
Right, that's what man Bobby just said.
We just need, we just need to come together as a council, give a list.
Y'all talking about all these plans, y'all ain't filed a complaint on me. Bring your list.
So if we filed a complaint, will it, is it notated, if we filed a complaint, like say, I got mad at the Holly's Act, unfortunately not, but.
No.
They wouldn't know, is what I'm asking.
No, I don't think, you know, they wouldn't know.
I'm not mad at Holly's Act, I just threw them up.
No, you, no, they don't have to know.
Yeah, no.
Cause it comes from the town.
Okay, so they wouldn't know who complained it, like, okay.
But part of the reason for being, you know, pretty specific about it too, is that, you know, if you just get mad at me and then you send the trash can hurt me one day, it's like, oh, Jerry, you don't complain, you know, that's why we, whoever calls in, they should give you pretty good receipt.
I don't, I don't disagree with that, I just, I just don't wanna.
And the rule there is just Terry's plan.
Get us a list, we'll send a list.
You don't have that power.
You don't.
Yeah, let's talk about housing at the next, next round.
Yeah, we're ready. We got it.
I, I've got a, I'm sorry, man, I know you wanna go ball game or whatever, I got a five-minute executive session about good name and character of employees, and we, we really need to do this, it's very important. So if y'all wanna do it, we will, if you don't, we go to house.
I'll stop them.
Yeah, garbage truck, right, what was that?
What did we do on that? What we said about?
I don't know, we ain't done nothing.
Well, I mean, what?
Today's garbage truck, right, on the, on the agenda.
What do we haul in the garbage still now?
Well, we haul in a ton, West Jefferson, I can't remember what the name of that place is, and we haul it out there, once in a while we got a small load to burn. We back on track on.
What, what happened on some days when, uh, we're, we're supposed to get Mondays and Tuesdays on one load, right? And I would think what's happening, we're getting loaded before we get through the route. And we carry the burner, it take an hour to go to burner. We can carry it to burner, come back, and it can work your route the rest of the day out. You go to West Jefferson, you go back, it take three hours. You won't have enough time to do that day.
So what? Perry getting done? The pole down there, he ain't said nothing about it, couldn't get it done.
Okay, I just, I just, uh, I just about checking my truck, I just wanna see. We'll see, Bobby, hey, get with me, Bobby, on that deal.
All right, we're gonna, you wanna, you'll come back when we go there.
I'm doing that, oh. Come by for yours, like, say.
All right.
Don't forget to like and subscribe to our YouTube channel at www.youtube.com backslash forty-nine county news TV.